Recording in progress.
Good evening. This is a Greenbelt City Council work session. My name's Emmett Jordan. I'm the mayor, council.
Kristen Weaver, Mayor Proton.
Silky Pope, council member.
Daniel McKinnney, council member.
Jenny Pompey, council member.
Council member.
Rodney Roberts, city council.
Okay, any information items or discussion items for the end of the meeting, city manager? Okay, hey, you know, we hold these council work sessions on Mondays and Wednesdays several times a month to exchange information with community stakeholder groups or to give, collect, gather information from staff, advisory boards, residents, no votes or formal actions are taken at work sessions. Our work sessions and our meetings are open to the public, except for executive sessions as authorized by state laws so that residents and others can observe our deliberations. We do strive to provide reasonable opportunities for the public to voice opinions on the matters being discussed. Consider it so we'll pause periodically for public comment. During these times, if you wish to make a comment, raise your hand after being recognized. If you go to the podium, state your name and where you live, because we need that for the minutes, well, that's one way. If you are on Zoom, you can use the Q and A tab on the bottom of your screen to submit a written question, or you can raise your virtual hand. And once again, after being recognized and promoted, you'll be able to speak after you state your name and where you live. And finally, if you are watching on live stream on Facebook or cable TV, you can send us an email at questions@greenbeltmd.gov. So for the public comment, please limit your comments to three minutes. And we ask that, let you speak on the topic, one topic related to the question under consideration. And as always, we ask that you avoid questioning the motives of others. So tonight, we've got a trifecta work session. We're going to start off with a presentation and update on the Phase Two of the Tribasi DEI Audit. After that, we have a special meeting. We'll convene a special meeting. There's a number of year-end contracts that we have to deliberate on. And after that, we have a short executive session. So a lot of business to take care of, but I'm confident that this is going to go pretty quickly. City Manager Sam Rowan, how are you tonight?
I'm doing great, thank you. We had a receive exciting news today. Our pool deck repair project was approved by Board of Public Works.
Thank you. Wow, that's awesome news.
Yeah, I've been stressing for a couple of months now.
Yeah, you look much more relaxed.
Yes. So the, just for context, council had previously approved 1.5 million dollars for the pool deck repair. And we saw an opportunity to apply for Program Open Space Funding to take care of that report that would have shifted 1.5 million dollars out of ARPA into Program Open Space. So this afternoon, actually this morning, the governor, the state treasurer, and the comptroller met and approved numerous end of the year projects. And that included our 1.5 million dollars. So really happy to do that. We will now kick it into high gear with the team to start planning out the timeline and all the communications with, communications plan with our recreational, recreational facility users. So beginning in January, we'll, we'll brief council on what the, the project entails and we'll prepare for those public messaging campaigns with our residents. So residents, bear with us for just a couple more weeks to get our plan together and we'll, we'll make those public and start communicating.
Yeah, you know, over time, we've been pretty successful with the Program Open Space Funding. So the repairs to the pool, pretty major project. But with Program Open Space Funding, it's been approved, but it would not actually be allocated for quite some time. We'd get it towards the middle or the end of the year. Right?
Well, this, we got our letter at three o'clock today from the Board of Public Works and the Department of Natural Resources that our project was approved and we can commence the project now. So any expenditure we have from today onward will be reimbursed through the grant. So it's a reimbursable grant, so we have to spend the money and then ask for reimbursement. So I'll plan, I'll put a plan together with her, with the treasurer and how we'll fund that locally. Or we're sorry, we'll fund the expense with local funds and then we'll get reimbursed.
Very good, very good. That's, it's quite a relief to actually get that approval. Okay, well, we're going to move into the work session on just an update and presentation on the DEI Audit Phase Two. And our DEI coordinator, Tyra Smith, is here. Tyra, how are you tonight?
Good evening. I'm doing great. How are y'all doing?
Doing pretty well, doing pretty well. So do you want to frame up the discussion or I guess Tribasi is, are they on the phone?
Yeah, they're online.
Okay.
All right, yeah, sure. So as you know, we wrapped up doing our Phase One Report, which was an internal audit. And from there, we went into our Phase Two Report. So in between Phase One and Phase Two, you know, that prompted the creation of our Jedi Action Team and some other things like trainings. I believe back in April, I reported on some trainings that I wanted to do with employees that would be geared towards some of the findings that were in our Phase One Audit. So we've been doing those. Our action team has actually also created a draft Jedi Vision Statement and definitions for justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion, and what that would mean for the city of Greenbelt. We've done presentations on that with our employees to gain their feedback on that vision and those definitions. We're moving into doing that for the community. Those definitions went into our city connector. They will be available online to seek the community feedback. We'll finalize, make some changes to them, and then we'll over present them to you all to adapt. And now going into the new year, our action team will break into subcommittees. We'll, where we will be targeting some of the other recommendations noted in our Phase One Audit. And then one of the main ones would be with our strategic planning, which we will now be able to do once we have our finalized Phase Two Report with our Phase One Report. So just want to, before we dive into our report today, really want to frame it more so as a story and not so much as a report. So if you've seen the PowerPoint, it's themed, it's anchoring our Roosevelt Center, the Greenbelt Cinema, and New Dale Cafe with their historical context. And I wanted to ask, how do we want to move with the flow of the presentation today? Do we want Tribasi to go through and stop like every 15 or 20 minutes for questions or?
Yeah, we, I think council, we'd like to, it doesn't look like the, the presentation is about 20, 30 minutes. So my preference usually is to kind of work through. And I see that there are three representatives from Tribasi on, online here. And we'll pause if necessary, if there's some specific council questions. But you know, given the time, I think I'd like to kind of work through the whole thing. And then we'll, after council makes, discusses a little bit, we can open it up to the public. And I think that's probably the best way to go.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good. So then, just a little bit about what Phase Two entailed. So Tribasi came from, I will say, August through, I want to say up to October, November. We did some formalized focus groups with the community. We also did some more informalized, like pop-ups with the community, where we were going to events like our Franklin Parks Back to School Rally and passing out information and trying to get feedback at our Labor Day Festival. And then some more informalized, like, you know, going to Hook and Reel and just talking to people there in the community where they are. And then, like we said, so we gathered feedback from our community and Tribasi is going to present today on what that feedback showed us. So online, we have Gail Watts and Maya, and I believe I saw Jim up there too. But I'm going to pass the mic over to them, let them introduce themselves, and then we could dive into the story today.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. So, Tribasi, how are you doing?
Doing well. How about yourself?
Not too bad, not too bad. So welcome.
Thank you.
If you want to frame things up and we can put the PowerPoint on the screen, we can kind of move through this.
Thank you. Unfortunately, we're not there in person with you for, for this session. But hopefully, this will still work as well in terms of sharing what we found. So my name's Gail Watts. I am co-founder of Tribasi Consulting. You may all remember also Rena Doyle, who has participated and doing a lot of this work and has presented in the past. Unfortunately, she's not available to be here with us tonight, but there are two other folks from Tribasi, and I'll let them introduce themselves.
Hi, everyone. I'm Maya. I'm a coordinator with Tribasi.
Good evening. I am Jumaka Warte. I go by June, and I am a consultant with Tribasi.
So as Tyra laid out, we kind of set this like a movie because we know that stories really resonate with people. And Greenbelt, like any other community, has its story. It doesn't necessarily start with just the formation of Greenbelt. There's a history of Indigenous people who were here previously. But there's a whole story involved. There's been an evolution of the city of Greenbelt. And so we wanted to be able to capture what is the experience today? What are, what are community members saying and feeling and experiencing in the city of Greenbelt? Recognizing that that also connects to the history of the city. And it will set the stage for our decisions that you all make about the future and where the city is going. So if you could go to the next slide, please. So we have provided you with a document, a report. Again, it highlights this, this story with, you know, a movie theme. Today, you're going to get the trailer version of the movie. But we want to highlight a few particular things, in particular, how to use this document. So the city is on a journey to become healthier, to really infuse these concepts of justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion through a strategic plan. And how do we operationalize these concepts across all city functions and in all city departments? This is one component to do that because there are some recommendations and some findings that will help shape that strategic plan in the future. As with all of this work, we highly encourage that it's shared, that there's transparency, as you're doing this evening, with the broader community as well as with employees about the kinds of things that we are finding. So this is part of the baseline of where the city is right now. Along with the Phase One Assessments of Structure and Culture, this completes that process in terms of providing a baseline of where the city is overall. Now, just like with the Phase One Reports, we know that sometimes this can generate some reactions and some emotions from folks. Whatever folks may be feeling, we want to emphasize a few things. This is what we heard from community members. So it's their voice, it's their perspective. It does not negate all of the work that the city has currently done and has done in the past and is planning to do in the future. This just gives some context as to impact. So if you could go to the next slide. So Tyra highlighted a multitude of projects that are currently happening. We kind of want to just give you an overview of where you are in a process, recognizing that this is never linear. It's not like you just go from point A to point B. You're dealing with humans and, and those processes are never, you know, a straight line. It's, it's an ongoing and complicated process. So we did internal assessments. We completed in Phase One. Phase Two is the Community Impact Assessment. And then, as Tyra mentioned, she has formed a Jedi Action Team that has done some work in terms of developing the lens or the framework in a draft form. And has spent quite a bit of time getting feedback from employees about these definitions. And then we'll move into the community to get further feedback. So the combination of the Phase One, Phase Two, and then using this framework, the Jedi Lens, if you will, is what will help set the stage for developing a strategic plan that it makes sure these concepts are embedded in all aspects of the city. Moving forward, there is certainly implementation, setting priorities, providing education and learning opportunities to everyone to be able to implement this plan, evaluating the impact, particularly the impact on community members. And then, you know, determining accountability. How do we measure growth? We look, think of accountability as an account of our abilities or growth in doing the work, and then making modifications as needed. So you can go to the next slide. So this just highlights what's in the document itself. We provide some of that history of the city, which we've heard so often, but we put it in a little bit of a different context, including the history of some of the Jedi efforts that have been taking place and your partnership with us, Tribasi Consulting. We put this in the context of an overall process. What does that look like and why? We'll talk a little bit about our target audience, particularly for community engagement. And then the categories of conversations, the things that we heard, and those have been framed in terms of strengths, gaps, opportunities, and threats. And then how to move forward. There are some nuggets of information that are important to pull out and identifying root causes that helps, again, formulate that process of a strategic plan. You could move on. So a Community Impact Assessment is a little bit different than some other kinds of assessments. So we're looking to hear not just the stories and experiences of community members, but we're looking in particular to hear from the folks that are less likely to send council emails, that are less likely to show up at council meetings or participate in committees or commissions. We're looking to hear from those who are less engaged. And from that, determine what is the impact of being a resident in the city of Greenbelt. So as I mentioned earlier, this is sort of the third component of an overall assessment of the city. And so this, the three documents will comprise the entire assessment process that you can then use to set, create the foundations for your strategic plan. You can go on to the next one.
So we wanted to give a little bit of context as to who we spoke with during our focus groups. So of 91 people, 62% identify as being part of the African diaspora. 21% identify as white. 13% identify as colonized by Spain. 3% identify as other unknown, and 1% identified as Asian. And next for age, the largest group of people we spoke with were people in their 30s and 40s. And then the next largest population were people over 50. And then the smallest group was people in their 20s. Still missing some representation there. We can go to the next one. And now I'm going to pass it over to Tyra to explain a little bit more about why we chose these specific locations for our focus groups.
Hey, so if you see on the map, we were trying to be intentional about hitting all of the different parts of Greenbelt. But mainly, we also, we wanted to talk to, like Gail said, our community members who are less likely to engage with council because those voices are the ones that we're not able to hear. So we wanted to be sure that when we were collecting our data, we were getting a broad scope of perspectives and experiences of our residents. And then we wanted to go to them. So you might look and see like there aren't many, like, Greenbelt-owned, like, city-owned places here. We just wanted to go in the community where they are because, you know, it's much easier to talk to people in your own living room versus trying to bring them home and have them talk to you there. So we chose these different locations based on that.
Yeah, I just want, go ahead.
Go ahead, go.
I just want to add that we did a number of, for lack of a better phrase, drive-bys, if you will. Where literally, we just go to different locations. If somebody was willing to have a chat with us, we would talk with them. And, and that would be part of our conversations as well. At Hook and Reel, we went to karaoke night, danced with people while talking to them about their experiences living in Greenbelt, right? Even though the Zion Church is outside of the official city limits, we were able to talk to quite a few people who live in and/or visit Greenbelt about their experiences as well. So the whole point was to go to people as opposed to expecting them to come to us.
Thank you, Tyra and Gail. So now we're going to go to our next slide and talk a little bit about what topics we actually covered during our community conversations. So I'll let everyone read through these. But this is by no means an exhaustive list. We definitely didn't have a specific script. But these were general, like, guideposts for our conversations. And yeah, I'll let everyone read over them for a minute. And I'll say also, some of these, we didn't necessarily cover all of these topics with every single individual we spoke with or every group. So again, just kind of guideposts of some topics we had to cover with people. And I'm going to pass it back over to Gail now.
Yeah. Next slide, please. So we use the same assessment criteria as we, for the Phase One Assessments for the Phase Two Assessments. So you can see the Level One through Level Five on the left with a little bit of explanation. And just a note and reminder, in the Phase One Assessments, both the structure and the culture were assessed at a Level One. And you will notice here that we're assessing actually the impact of the city of Greenbelt on its residents at a Level Two, so slightly higher. So we probably could have assessed this even higher at a Level Three, but there were some particular threats that we'll highlight later that made sure that this stayed at a Level Two. So if you go on to the next slide, we're going to talk a little bit about the strengths and gaps, opportunities and threats, and give you some highlights of these areas. So your strengths probably are not going to be a surprise to you at all. Most people talk about the small-town feel and that they really enjoy that, the parks and trails. The services for senior citizens in particular were things that come up quite frequently. What also was of note, community policing in Franklin Park was perceived very positively, that that was seen in a positive light, and those relationships were very meaningful. Events, the city puts on a lot of events, and those events are viewed as very accessible. And people really liked the fact that we were out there talking to them about their experiences. So in the focus groups, and even when we just talked, stopped and talked to somebody and said, you know, we were working with the city and we want to hear what it's like to live here, people responded very favorably to that and wanted more of that, actually. Some of the gaps, probably also not a surprise for you, communication. And you notice, we put it there twice with multiple exclamation points because this came up from every single person that we talked to. And every single focus group and, and group conversation is that the communication strategies are not effective at reaching the entire community. That the city events that are planned, while there are a lot of events and those are viewed positively, they're not really viewed as very inclusive. And they're not viewed inclusive for a variety of reasons, not only their location, primarily being located in Central Greenbelt, but there's a feel that they aren't necessarily planned by and for the entire community. And so they're, they're seen as, as old Greenbelt events and not necessarily city of Greenbelt events. Another gap that I'm sure won't be a surprise is around recreation. While we know that the city has been making changes and improvements to recreation opportunities outside of Old Greenbelt, that is still perceived as a very strong gap. Even people in Old Greenbelt can recognize that, that other parts of the city don't have access to similar or the same kinds of activities. And so those disparities really stand out and do have an effect on folks. Affordability, we heard from folks that, you know, from some who said that when they retire, that they didn't believe that they'd be able to stay in this city of Greenbelt, that they would need to move out of the city because they would no longer be able to afford to stay here. We heard from a few small business owners in Greenbelt who do not live in the city. And they said that they would have liked to have lived in Greenbelt, but they couldn't find housing that was affordable for their family. And then we also heard some conversations or some comments about safety at night, particularly around the parks and trails. So you can go to the next slide. So you've got some opportunities, of course. People do want to hear what's going on. They want to be engaged in two-way communication. So we all have some recommendations about enhancing communication. People, because they like the small-town feel, would like more community-building activities. They would like not only activities in different parts of town, but they want activities that sort of bridge the geographic divide within Greenbelt. So part of that conversation came up, transportation improvements. You know, whether that's a shuttle or other ways of getting around within the city of Greenbelt that makes it safer and easier to get from one part of town to the other. Folks talked quite a bit about wanting more youth and family kinds of engagement as part of that community-building activity, and also talked quite a bit about wanting more improved community relations. I'd like to point out that we generally did not hear negative things about the police, even from African-American males. There's still a, that idea out there very much that police is not, policing and policing in the community may not be safe, but we did not hear negative comments. And so we wanted to highlight that as, as something that's kind of unique to the city of Greenbelt right now. So some of the threats, and as I said, these are some of the reasons why you have a Level Two and not a Level Three. People are quite aware of the explicit divisions. Those divisions are not only geographical, but they're also felt racially as well. And that's, they're seeing, people see the inequity between different parts of town. Just so you know, it says here, centering GHI. People generally use GHI, Old Greenbelt and Central Greenbelt, kind of synonymously. So residents, residents are aware of these divisions. They feel the divisions and they see the differences in different parts of town, and they feel that inequity very strongly. So as a result, there are some parts of town that really feel a sense of exclusion and stigma, particularly in the Franklin Park area. We heard a lot of comments about city council when we asked people, why don't you go? Or why wouldn't you go? And, and they said things like, well, why would they, they probably wouldn't even listen to me. So why should I bother to go? And that stems from the fact that much of the city has not been actively engaged. And so there's a feeling of disengagement as a result of that. And that disengagement translates into, why should I go to Old Greenbelt? Why should I go to City Hall? Why should I participate in things that the city offers? So these threats kind of all tie together, and they're also tied to the history of the city itself. So if you can move on to the next one. So this feedback is really important because this is residents telling you what they think and what they feel and what their experiences are. As I said, this is a baseline. So you can use some of the quotes and, and comments that are made in the report itself as a baseline to measure in the future as the city makes changes in terms of how are people affected by the changes that you've made. And so we have here five specific kinds of recommendations. The title for the first one, it just says, "Community Engagement Coordinator", but basically, somebody who's responsible for engaging the community, a person whose job description includes building relationships, outreach to community groups, making those connections, developing engagement plans, that that would be a that that would be a critical role for the city itself, especially in reaching the communities that are least engaged. A more robust communication strategy, it needs to be multifaceted. Thinking about that different parts of the community have different interests and different needs. Not everybody reads a newsletter. You have to think generationally. Some folks are far more into technology, others are less engaged through technology. But that also, communication needs to be two ways. It can't just be communication out from the city about what the city is doing, but also opportunities for engagement and providing input in a real way. In terms of council engagement, we're going to suggest that council itself maybe holds some modified town halls or forums in different parts of the city that are designed specifically to build relationships, designed to build those engagements. We know that council is frequently out at community events and that those community events don't necessarily reach all aspects of the city. So having it in different parts of the city as an invitation to participate in city government, we think could go a long way. And then at some point, having roving locations and times of council meetings itself, I think will help bridge that participation in city government. Departmental evaluations, we suggest that they be made based on the impact to community. So as I said, here is a baseline that's giving you some baseline about different, a few different departments at least. We generally didn't hear a lot of negative about any of the departments, but it sets a baseline. And so therefore, constantly evaluating your departments based on the impact to the different parts of town and the community as large will go a long ways to infusing these concepts within the city. Also equity in some of the programs. As I said, one of the things that people really notice and feel is that there is inequity in the services that are provided. And so it's not that people want exactly the same thing in all parts of town. What they want, though, are services, activities that are geared to their community and their community dynamics. And so again, evaluating programs based on impact to different segments of the community and constantly building in getting evaluation and getting input from community members for both departments and programs will go a long ways to evolving the services that are provided by the city. So you can go on to the next slide. So you'll see this highlighted in the report, this concept of Seven Generation Principles. We draw this from multitude of indigenous communities, including indigenous communities in this country. The idea of connecting the past to the present to the future, so that decision-making is made based on thinking about the regenerations in the past and their experiences, how that then is impacting current generations, which this report is doing today in terms of the current impact. And thinking of past and present in terms of, well, then what kind of changes do we make that are going to positively impact generations that aren't even born yet? So across a seven-generation span. So we use this reference point of seven generations, both in the storytelling of the City of Greenbelt, but also in the types of recommendations that we made and suggestions for moving forward. So Seven Generation Principle, again, if it's not something that you're familiar with, allows you to think in ways that are really sustainable and also provides a holistic way of making decisions so that you're constantly lessening burdens for future generations while acknowledging what past generations have experienced and couch that in the ways it's experienced today. So if you could go on to the next. So in thinking about this past, present and future, some of the root causes for what we have found in listening to community members is that the history of exclusion is felt today, both in the geographic divide and inequities that people experience within the city. People are feeling that systemically and that is very much tied to the history of the development of the city itself. So how is that affecting people today? You have large segments of the community that are feeling disconnected from the city itself. While they may feel connected to their immediate communities, they don't necessarily feel a connection to Greenbelt as a whole. There is an overwhelming impression that the city focuses on Old Greenbelt, Central Greenbelt, the GHI area. And then in terms of thinking about the future, anything that the city does to increase the engagement, particularly of younger generations, in building relationships and connection with decision-making will reflect positively really on the entire community. You're building an environment where future generations are going to see that part of their role or responsibility in being a resident in Greenbelt is to be connected to the decisions that are made because they see that they have a voice in that process. You can go to the next slide. And I'm going to turn it over to Maya.
Thank you, Gail. So we want to anchor this report in community healing as a lens for this work. Some essential components of community healing are that culturally-sentonic processes are integral. So culturally-sentonic or culturally-relevant. So storytelling is a tool in many of the targeted demographics that we had for the focus groups to advance community healing. Justice must also be a process and an outcome and a conduit of transformation for community healing. There are psychological dimensions to community healing. So recognizing that we have a collective memory as a community and really reflecting on having critical consciousness skills, critical thinking skills to question existing practices and systems. And that ultimately leads us to the community being an agent of change. So the community really driving the changes that we want to see.
So if you, so this is sort of the, this is the context that we were thinking about in terms of developing the topics and how we approached folks in terms of giving opportunity for people to tell their stories and tell their experiences. This is reflected in the reason why we went to particular locations within the city to engage people in different ways. And it also reflects some of the types of questions that we ask participants to elicit their experiences in ways that may be more reflective of their cultural experiences. So if you'd go on to the last slide. So what's next? This is the trailer to future work. Using Phase One and Phase Two, all three assessment reports to refine strategies and address some of the gaps that have been highlighted in all three. Constantly and ongoing engagement of staff and community in a collaborative process will be really significant in moving forward, especially when we think about that Seven Generation Principle as well as community healing, because community healing is a process as much as it is an outcome. And then embedding these definitions into the structure and culture of the city itself with a vision for moving forward all set the stage for a strategic plan to begin doing all of the implementation work moving forward. And so with that, that gives you the highlights of the Phase Two report. And I will turn it back over to the mayor.
Hey, well, thank you so much, Gail. Appreciate the good work and the overview. Also, the presentation of the information in the context of PowerPoint, very effective. So council, do you have questions or thoughts? Yes, please.
Yeah, I had a few thoughts. I did appreciate the demographics. I think that I was trying to do a comparison to the census demographics and it's not, the ages especially are not quite in the same categories as the census does. But I think clearly that is a closer to representative of the Greenbelt population than we often get in surveys. And in fact, we just saw in like the wayfinding survey we were talking about on Monday in the sense that it's, that more African-Americans especially represented and I think also younger folks, more middle-aged at least, if not young, but more middle-aged represented. So I appreciate, I appreciate that, that you really, it still may not be perfect, but it is, I think, closer to Greenbelt's actual demographics. I think still a good under-representation of the Asian population, I noticed. There didn't seem like you talked to so many folks there. So that's just an overall comment. Did you ask a couple of things? Did you ask, is there information in the full report about what part of the city, the people that you talked to from? And also, were all of these conducted in English or were any of them done in Spanish? And did you collect information about that, about like primary language?
There were, we did have a Spanish translator with us and so a couple of times. And so there were a few of the conversations that were in Spanish with a Spanish translator leading those. The rest were primarily in English.
And did you ask people, I mean, I know you were mostly in East and West. Did you actually ask and collect data about where they lived in Greenbelt or if they in fact did not live in Greenbelt?
We always ask folks whether they lived in Greenbelt or whether they were a visitor to Greenbelt. The majority, by far, the majority of the results you're finding are residents of Greenbelt. There were, we made a point of also talking to some business owners in Greenbelt, even though they didn't live in Greenbelt. And we talked to just a few people who visited Greenbelt in terms of their experiences, but were not residents. But overwhelmingly, the data is from residents themselves.
And then I guess one other, and then I'll let some of my colleagues get some questions in. But did you, so it seems like clearly communication and/or lack thereof was a big theme. Is there, are there any particular, did anything come out of those conversations in terms of ways that we could reach people better, like ways that if they feel like they are not being communicated well with? I mean, I think you talked about a few in terms of like having forums in other parts of the city and things like that. But were there any other themes that came out in terms of what they would like us to be doing better to be able to reach them? Is that, any thoughts or is that something that's also maybe in the report with some more details?
There are some more details in the report. Everybody had a different idea depending upon their demographics, right? So younger folks tended to want something that's more electronic. Newsletters resonate, tend to resonate more with, you know, older Gen Zs and baby-borer generations. So you have to think of that in mind, but really because there are so many facets of the city that are disconnected in certain ways, probably the primary form of communication, at least to begin building that, would be to go to communities themselves and having those conversations one-on-one or in small groups or in forums. I think that part of the plan moving forward would be bringing together community members and staff to help build what that communication strategy would look like.
Well, thank you, thank you. I've got a couple of thoughts, kind of following up on what Mayor Protim was saying about the demographics. I'm just wondering, I didn't really, just knowing the city really well, it seems like there's a proportion of the Asian population, but more so the North African population. We've got a pretty substantial number of folks that are French speakers, both in the East and the West. And I didn't really see that come up. So was anyone in the sample group of 91 of African descent?
Yes, quite a few were. We did put people together in one lump group, but that really should be the African diaspora group, just as they colonized by Spain is sort of the Latin diaspora. So yes, within that group, we spoke with immigrants from Africa. We spoke with a couple of business owners who were also immigrants from the continent. And so yes, that included a wide range of folks, not just generational African-Americans.
That's helpful. And so another question that I had had to do with the length of time that the folks had actually lived in Greenbelt or been visiting Greenbelt. So I think that's important when you're talking about communication. It just seems like there are different cohorts for people that have lived here from, I don't know, one to three years. They may not have had a chance to really become acclimated with the community. I know in my life, when I've moved from one place to another, it takes, I'm a little slow, but it takes me about five years to really move from one place to another. So when, so was that one of the questions? Did you actually ask people how long they've been in Greenbelt?
So since we, as Maya talked about, we have these guideposts of topics. It's amazing, once you get people started, they start telling you their life story, right? So we heard quite a few life stories from some people who've lived here in Greenbelt for most of their life or very long periods of time, to those who'd literally just moved in a few months ago. So we got a pretty good mix of that, but we didn't necessarily get that information from everyone to be able to provide you with a chart.
I think that'd be helpful, just having a sense, the questions about communication and feeling connected and also just being aware of programming and opportunities. I think some breaking it into some cohorts might be helpful in us better understanding the interaction. And you know, council is, we're in the community and we're elected to represent our constituents. So when you talk about gaps, I think, you know, actually focusing on staff and making sure that those connections between the public and staff may be a little bit more remote than the connections between the public and council. I'm not sure that that's the case, but sometimes it seems that way. Hey, so and finally, I was just wondering, so just specifically the breakdown of the 91 people, how many were from Greenbelt East?
I don't know that I can give you that number.
So I think that's important to know.
I'd have to go back and look at our.
Back and kind of let us know that, I'd appreciate that. Hey, other thoughts and questions or comments or gratitude?
Yes, I'm certainly grateful for this work and I'm grateful for all the learning that we're doing as part of this.
I agree, thank you so much. I did have one question or maybe two questions on, excuse me, Slide 16 and 17. So you have, you know, community healing. Do you see that as an outcome or do you see that as another step in the process? So and that leads me to, you know, your Phase Three trailer and what we should expect. Like I'm just trying to think of what are we hoping to achieve within the next phase of this process? And how, you know, what are the action steps that community members will be able to be involved in in creating that change? Since you call out that the community is the agent of the change, what are some of those tactical things that we might be able to call out for people to get involved in?
So community healing, we recognize is not a concept that necessarily a lot of folks are familiar with, at least in this country. So it is both a process as well as an outcome. So when you engage in a process that is focused on ways in which communities naturally engage with one another, that focuses on building connections and storytelling, when you focus on processes that are culturally relevant and center the community as having the voice for making change, that in itself is part of a process of creating healing, which is also an outcome. So we think of all of those points that Maya spoke about as both a process and then thinking about them in terms of the outcome as well. So in moving forward in terms of the trailer to Phase Three, so Tyra had spoken about the Jedi Action Team has developed a draft framework for Jedi in defining what each of those concepts mean in the context of Greenbelt specifically. And they have run that through and gotten a lot of feedback from. And they have run that through and gotten a lot of feedback from employees about that. So the next phase would be to go and get community input. That's part of the engagement strategy. And in that, you begin to hear, again, more community experiences and how those terms need to be defined in ways that are relevant and work for community members. The same kind of process is something that we use over and over again, where a group begins to develop a draft, whether that's a draft vision, a draft Jedi framework, a draft strategic plan, whatever it may be, taking it to employees, taking it to community members, refining it, coming back to council with a final version that gets approved. And then everything just constantly repeats that cycle of developing something, taking it out and getting input, revising, and then finalizing. So that's an important process and that is also part of a community healing process.
Well, thank you, thank you. We've got a couple of questions from, Mayor Protem, please go.
This is actually, I think, more a question for the city manager. Because one of the suggestions in there was having a person who's sort of responsible community engagement coordinator. And I know we're probably not going to be able to add any new positions in the budget next year, but we have a new position that's constituent services. Do you see any possibility for that person? I know you're already in the process of hiring that, so the job description is already written. But do you see any possibility of incorporating any aspects of that community engagement role as part of maybe the constituent services role?
Yes, in fact, the, some of the, the job description language includes community engagement. So the person will be tasked with representing my office on HOA and civic association meetings. That's community engagement, so getting our folks out to meet with residents where they are.
Great.
And we have some good news, we finalized our interviews today. So we're going through the last steps of getting some, getting some commitments from candidates, so.
Great, congratulations.
Exciting, yeah.
Only good news today, wow.
Yes.
Don't, don't say that. There's still four hours to midnight.
See, we have a couple of comments from the public, Mr. Orleans, you had your hand up.
Orleans, resident. Other than Gail and the two people from Tribasi with Gail, may I inquire how many people are online tonight? Potentially, how many residents are online tonight?
There are four listed attendees.
Yeah, that would not include anyone that was viewing on Facebook or on cable TV and whatnot.
Yeah, so that's just the people who are signed into Zoom.
I think the question of civic engagement should begin with all of us asking ourselves, why so few residents, whether it's Old Town or East or West, participate in city council meetings and work sessions and the various advisory bodies meetings? One reason that has come up tonight in the report, which I presume is now available and I'll be inquiring for a copy tomorrow. But one reason is transportation. And while it's transportation would not prevent someone from watching the meeting on Zoom or streaming or Facebook or whatever other electronic means, one reason people don't come to the municipal building, which is set up for meetings and transmitting out electronically, is that it's difficult to get here at 7:30 or previously eight o'clock and more even more difficult maybe to get home unless they have a car. And the question has been suggested to council for many years that council do more to facilitate the opportunities for residents, especially West and East, to come into Old Town for meetings and other community activities. And council has rejected that suggestion. We have very pretty landscaping in Greenbelt. We're shortly probably going to have a lot of informational kiosks in Greenbelt. But folks from West and East, and even maybe Old Town who don't have a car, I would suggest need assistance coming to the municipal building. And I believe this was alluded to in the report. It's also long been suggested to council that the city, city management sponsored by the council, have outreach in various parts of town, Shrum Hills. We can find a location in either Franklin Park proper or if necessary, Greenbelt Station so called, where we can have community brunches on a nice day. Tables can be set up, there can be food prepared by the city or maybe homemade plates, dishes that are prepared by people with their ethnic background in mind. And again, the city has not accepted that suggestion. I look forward to reading the report. I thank the three folks from Tribasi. Much of this, of course, requires city councils budgeting to do so. I look forward to that as well.
Thank you, thank you. Hey, one point that did come up in the report was this idea of getting around, moving the meetings around to different sections of the city. And that is something that we did consciously before COVID. It kind of fell off during COVID and before that a little bit. And also, things have changed around a little bit because we are Zooming and doing so many other hybrid technologies. We really couldn't do that. But we used to move our meetings around. Anytime we had a meeting with Franklin Park, we would hold it in the recreation center. We would go around to the different HOAs in Greenbelt East. So that is something that we need to get back to and then kind of adapt it to the new technology. Because I do think that, I'm always surprised at the number of people that will say, hey, I was watching cable TV and I saw the last meeting and I saw what you said. I hear that a lot. Yeah, Mayor Protem.
Well, I would just like to point out that I think as we were going, you know, just about a year ago, as we were going through the process of of filling the vacancy after, after Councilmember Gordon passed away, there were several of us who very strongly advocated for for bringing those listening sessions to all three parts of the city. We didn't have great attendance at the one in Franklin Park, but we did have, I think, very good attendance at the one in Greenbelt East. And so I think that is something that that, under the right circumstances, has, we have actually done. And I know that many council members have also been involved on some of the community walks that the police chief has done. I think there's still more work to be done, but I would argue that there have been some attempts. And certainly, I was one who very strongly advocated for those three listening sessions in all three parts of the city during that specific incident. So I think, I think you're right, Mr. Orleans, we can do more. But I think, I don't think I would agree with the characterization that we have done nothing in that regard.
Let's move to another comment. Bob Rand is online. Bob, are you there?
I am, can you hear me?
Yeah, good evening.
Okay, I'm Bob Rand, 19 Ridge Road. Again, I want to applaud the leadership of Tyra Smith and other staff in working with Tribasi to better understand the city and its residents and develop a vision for healing and growth for Greenbelt. I'm excited to see how these phase two efforts build on the initial phase one work. As a resident, I'm grateful for the progress I'm seeing through this process. I'm not sure how many other cities are doing this, but it's really exciting to be in a city that's taking this on. I noticed in the, in the slides, the Jedi phases overview, there's a lot more work to do. I encourage staff to recommend funding in the fiscal year 26 budget and for council to approve the funds, excuse me, to continue working with Tribasi to develop a strategic, strategic plan and implement it. I'll be looking for that line item in the proposed budget in early spring. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rand. So at this time, I don't see any other comments. Ms. Smith, would you like to say anything?
Yeah, no, just thank you all for being here tonight and giving us opportunity to do this work. Very exciting road ahead of us, so thank you and happy holidays.
Yeah, happy holidays. And to the, to Gail and the Tribasi team, you know, thank you for your good work. So we're looking forward to seeing the entire report and kind of. So thank you so much.
Thank you all. Just a final reminder from the Tribasi team, I think today marks the end of phase, phase one officially. So wanted to just add, phase two, excuse me. So just wanted to add that as we close.
Thank you so much and best regards for the holidays. City Manager Sam Ron, would you like to?
I'd thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council for supporting this very important work.
Okay. Okay, well, at this time, we're going to move into the next phase of our gathering tonight, which is a special meeting. And we've got a number of items, but given that today is December the 18th, and this Mayor Protem pointed out a little bit earlier, this is the last time that council is going to be gathered in 2025. So this is a very special.
Twenty-four, twenty-four. All canceled.
But we got some business to take care of, just in regard to end of the year contracts with the American Rescue Plan Act, so I'm going to band gavel. I hereby call the special meeting of Greenbelt City Council to order. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. McKenney?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Weaver?
Here.
Ms. Pope?
Yes, here.
Ms. Pompey?
Here.
Mr. Robert?
Here.
Ms. Niesel?
Here.
Ms. Jordan?
I'm here. Okay, well, let's, let's dive right in. I don't know if we, I move, would someone like to move that we adopt the agenda as presented?
I think we have some things to add.
Yes, it's, we have a couple of things that we want to put before council. Mr. George is passing that around. We have a GPS probe that we want to add to the list. This was on the, one of the projects on the list. Now that money has freed up, we're able to move that into the, into the queue. We have HVAC system for the animal control project. And then we have been looking to resolve the sound issues in the council chamber. We have two proposals, ones for 13,000, others for 26,000. And we're having some, some heartburn about spending that kind of money on microphones, but it's the options that we have before us. So we want to add those as discussion item, I think. Well, we, because they exceed the $10,000, we would, the $10,000, we would need council's approval to be able to move forward with those items.
Very good, very good. So let's dive right in. Yeah, Mayor Protem.
We also need to talk about the Bradenfield Art, is that?
That's already on the agenda.
Oh, it's just, okay, it's just not listed as one of the contracts.
There is a contract for it, it's on the, on the, I thought it's in the agenda.
Well, I thought I pulled the one right off the website, but let me, let me.
That one, yeah, no bottom.
I thought that's the one I pulled up, but.
It's on page nine of the 19 page packet.
No, it wasn't, I guess I didn't have the most recent one, I think.
Okay, I apologize for that.
No, I, I think I didn't, I think I hadn't refreshed my, my, the window for council meetings. So I think it was not pulling up the most recent one when I pulled it up.
So we're adding to the agenda.
The GPS probe?
The GPS probe and that's part of our digit, our, the, our effort to document and map our assets, energy asset system.
Energy assets.
Sorry?
You said energy assets?
All of our assets, so things like signs, playgrounds, sidewalks.
Okay, so these items are all under council discussion, more or less. So really, it's not, we just added a couple of things to the discussion. So I'll just make a motion to approve the agenda as, for the special meeting as presented, as modified.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, if the motion carries. Well, let's dive right in. Mr. George, thank you so much for being here with us tonight. This very special last session of 2024. So let's, do you want to talk about, or Mr. Sam Ron, would you like to talk about the ARPA, American Rescue Plan, end of the year contracts? First, we can just reiterate that this process, the funding that we received, which was a little bit more than $22 million, has, all of the funding has to be encumbered or allocated by the 31st of December. Correct. Although we can, we'll be able to actually implement the programs between now and two years from now. But this is really the last opportunity to to make any modifications, so.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. And we, many of the contracts that have been approved, particularly at the last meeting, there were contracts, MOUs and grant agreements that encumber the funds. Some of those expenditures are going to happen through the, through December of 2026. So a good example will be our food subsidy programs, which the Greenbelt News Review highlighted in today's paper. Those programs that, that funding is being allocated in December of 2024, but those expenditures are going to carry through to 2026. And speaking, and part of the strategy, at least with those programs, were that we wanted to adhere and we took, we took into serious consideration the recommendations of the People First Coalition to put some of this money into, into serving our residents. And we allocated that funding for the next two years for those projects. Other projects, we just need to make sure they encumber the funds. These, some of these projects that are before you tonight, they're going to get spent. Those funds are going to get spent right away. In fact, the first one, the office furniture to go, that's to make the improvements to the chairs here in the, in the council chamber and getting tables that are more conducive to how the space is being utilized for meetings and functions in this space. So there'll be smaller tables that are collapsible and to themselves. We'll, we'll change the look and feel of these tables so that they get better usage. The Pro Pack is the shelter trailer that search requested. It's took, taken us a while to get that trailer and the outfitting. It's before you for 14,738, a little bit above the 11,500 that they had initially requested. And this is, this is the proposal. So we, as reported at the last council meeting, we were down to 70, 75,000 of opera money left to spend. So we really don't have that, that much money left to spend.
Okay, well, we can just kind of go through each of these. And if there is no discussion, you know, we can just vote. So the first item, which is the quote from Office Furniture to Go. Would someone like to make a motion or is there any additional discussion?
Well, we can, I think we should probably make the motion and then we can discuss, right? I move that council approve the use of 14,120 dollars from ARPA funding for office furniture to go for replacement of tables and chairs in the council room.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think Councilmember Niesel was fast on the microphone, so we'll give her the second discussion.
Mr. Mayor, the, this furniture is very similar, actually, it's the same type of product that council approved for the senior, senior and friendly furniture for the ground floor east. So we're, we, we've put that equipment to use in that, in the community center. We like the use and feel of it, so we're buying more of it for this space.
Maybe for here, so we use these for the work sessions and such.
Heard a pretty good feedback at concerts and different activities in the community center about just, just having just a lot more functional furniture, it's more comfortable. These tables also, how old are these tables? They're pretty old.
Well, Mr. Mayor, you've been here 15 years, is this, was this a choir bike?
Actually.
Okay.
They're a lot older than that.
Yep. So I think we've got a really good use of the furniture and we should be proud of being able to use this furniture for so long. I think the chairs have, some of them, not all of them have really come to the, the end of their useful life.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, and so it looks like in the, in the quote, it's four chair dollies and 60 stackable chairs, which seems like more than we have in here right now. Are they all intended, will they all fit back there?
They, they should, yes.
Should, okay.
Without the table, thinking of the council meeting, 60 chairs can fit in here, I think.
Yeah, 60 chairs do fit in here for the FBI announcement. We had 90 chairs placed in this room.
And it looks like the tables are ones that, do they, that like sort of fold down so they'd be easier to get them out of the way, which I, is one of the problems with these. So, yeah, that, that seems like a, definitely a much more flexible furniture for this. So, yeah, that, that seems like a, definitely a much more flexible furniture for this space.
We also looked at power modules for the, for the tables, and we looked at the integrated ones, the cost, the price point is significantly higher. So what we decided to do with the power modules, the power modules are essentially power strips that are attached to the tables or embedded into the table. We're gonna go with off-the-shelf power modules that clamp onto the table, and then we can daisy-chain them to the, to the table, so we could provide power at the, at the tables.
So I won't have to bring my extension cord?
Yes.
It's a real problem for when we have a work session and folks are sitting here from, from whatever agency, they cannot, there's no place for them to plug in their laptops to make a presentation, so that's addressing a real problem. If there's no further discussion, let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No? Okay, thank you. So next up, you have the Pro Pack?
Yes, this is the CERT trailer that the CERT team has sent, priced out for us. We, we support, the council had previously approved this allocation, where because the cost has increased from the amount previously granted by council, we felt obligated to bring this back to council.
How much did the price increase?
It's only, yeah, $3,200.
Seems like mostly that's freight.
We were shocked by the delivery charges. In fact, we talked about sending someone down to pick it up.
It's like 30%, almost 30% of the cost of the unit.
Right, so the, the team has had some conversations about whether this is the right place to order it. Given, given the time, we're sort of stuck with this offer. However, we would not rule out swapping it out if we can get it from our local provider that would save us thousands on shipping.
It's from Kefersburg?
No, it's Southern North Carolina, South Carolina.
We didn't price it, we took the recommendation from CERT.
Okay, is there a motion, or is?
Yeah.
Please go ahead.
I move that we authorize $14,738.80 from Pro Pack Inc. for a shelter trailer for the CERT team.
Yes, and I of course will second that.
Did you want to, do you wanna make the motion?
No, 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 that's fine, I'll second that.
Mayor Protem, would, given the concern about the shipping charge, would you like to approve that subject to, if we cannot find our local distributor? So I would ask if we could modify that approval to be up to $4,738, with the caveat that if we find?
Make that a friendly amendment.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, so, so up to $14,738.80 from Pro Pack Inc. or a local supplier, if one can be, if one can be determined.
Source, that modification's okay with you, Ms. Pope?
It's fine, yes.
Okay, okay. Any additional discussion? All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Hartman, did you have a comment?
Michael Hartman, DuCorrt Garden Way, just two questions. One, I noticed that there's no tax on the furniture, but there is a $658 tax on the Pro Pack. I'm wondering why, why there's tax on one thing, one purchase and none on the other. Both are out of state. But anyway, the other question I have is the furniture that we have now that we're replacing, what is a plan to do with the furniture? Will it go to community forklift or another reuse location? Or what are the plans for, for the furniture now?
So do we have a policy, I mean, in the past, we've tried to, you know, vehicles and other city equipment, sometimes we're able to resell it to other organizations. I don't know that we have a policy on just some sort of productive reuse of city assets. Maybe that's something we can look at.
The, the city, the city as a practice likes to squeeze out every, every use of the equipment that we have, hence the table's been here for so long. So we really do not replace things until they break. And at that point, usually, they're not able to be sold. For these, for these are still in good condition, so we will go through our vendor, that's GovDeals, to sell all of, to sell this equipment. So we would ask our vendor to announce it and sell it through GovDeals. That, the tax one, I think that's just an oversight from the vendor. We do not pay taxes, sales tax in the state, even for vendors that are out of state. So that would just be an oversight, we'll have that, have that corrected.
Yeah, the CERT team didn't have our tax-exempt CERT on hand when they reached out to their vendor. But when we, when we, when we process it, we, we always strike the tax off of it.
Okay, let's move on to the next item, which is the Braden Athletic Complex Public Art Project. Excuse me.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have Nicole joining us, Nicole DeWalt, who has been instrumental in designing the public art policy and, and process. So she's joined us online for this presentation.
Mr. DeWalt, are you there?
Hi, good evening.
Hey, good evening, good evening. I was not able to join the call last night. Do you wanna talk a little bit about the project and some of the outcomes from the discussion last night?
Sure, we are making great strides. We had 11 responses to our initial request for qualifications for this project. And of those, we selected four finalists, and those are the individuals who were able to join us last night and make some presentations for the community. As you know, as you had participated, we were able to conduct a stakeholder survey to provide some initial feedback to the artists going into this process. And then we followed up with a second survey for meeting attendees afterwards to gain some additional input. So we really value all, all the community participation that we've had along the way, including that of the project committee panelists themselves, who are doing just a super job of reviewing extensive materials from each of the design packets and really embracing this opportunity for stewardship of the project on behalf of the community and with their participation. So it's going very well. We have our next meeting tomorrow night, and we are hoping to select a winner to offer a contract.
Okay, and as I said, I really wanted to be in on the call last night, I was not able to do that, health things.
No worries, thank you.
I'm just wondering, I know at some point, this had, was related to the sundial that used to be between the youth center and the tennis courts, but that, that's not the only site under consideration. Is that correct?
No, actually, yeah, the sundial was kind of the launching point of the project, and boy, has it expanded in scope from that initial vision. I, I think Roy Braden would be, would be tickled by what we've been able to do with this project as part of the renovation. The two sites that we had suggested to the artists for consideration were, one, where the pathway winds down behind the youth center and meets with the walking path behind the library. On that, on the tennis court side of the complex, there's a grassy area that seems like it would be a great place for a welcoming element, so that we're identifying as the primary entrance point for the complex. We are also looking at a secondary entrance, which is the one across from St. Hughes School, former St. Hughes School, off across that. So if the artists wished to offer us one artwork, we were suggesting that one closer to the youth center. If they felt that the budget supported them in doing two elements, we would be able to add that second element on the St. Hughes side.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's very creative. There, there was a tree there before, right, that grassy area next to the tennis courts?
I believe so.
So I'm thinking, just in terms of our discussions with the Prince George's County Library System now, that, that path that comes down adjacent to the library, reaching down to the tennis courts where the peace pole is, that's where the library kiosk project is going to be. And I believe that's moving forward, is it not?
I don't have any information about that.
The Stroywok project?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's moving forward. They've, they've got it, there's, the sets have been picked. I think they're just waiting right now on weather to make sure they have enough dry weather so they can get the post set and the concrete set.
Those, those, those sites would be along the walkway, or would they be in the parking lot where the EV charging stations are gonna go in?
They're along the walkway. There are gonna be some along where the, where the EV charging is gonna be. We're gonna position them so they're not in conflict with each other.
Right, and they would stretch down to just before where the peace pole is? Okay. It's getting a little busy over there. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, Councilmember Pompey and I were able to attend the session last night, and it was very interesting, four very different concepts, but all very interesting and certainly different, different strengths for each of them. So I think, I enjoyed the presentations last night, very different perspectives from all four of the artists, and it kind of made me, I don't know, I liked, I liked all four. I think I had some that I liked better than others, but it was, it seemed, they all had something to offer, which was, which I thought was, was really interesting. So, and I think, I think the idea, and, and Mr. Sam Ron or Mr. DeWalt, you can correct me, but I think the idea is now we're authorizing a contract, but it's to be, one of those four, but to be selected by the committee. But we have to get, we have to get this vote done now.
Correct, unfortunately, the timing is such that we need to encumber these funds, and we don't have a final recommendation for the team yet, so. We asked for a leap of faith from council that the committee is going to make the right decision and the best decision.
I think any of them, I think any of them would be, any of them would, would add something. I think there's different strengths and weaknesses to each one.
Councilmember Pompey?
Yeah, I want to recommend that we budget up to $50,000 for design materials, testing, fabrication, insurance, delivery, and installation of artwork and artist's travel slash lodging as applicable.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? Well, you know, I, I would still, you know, like to take, if the presentations with the four designs are online someplace, so people can look at, I'd like to take a look, maybe in the packet here. But I'm thinking, it's getting kind of busy up there towards the youth center, so I don't know if the installations on the St. Hughes side would be secondary or contingent, but just, I'd like to kind of weigh in on that side, possibly. But it's up to the committee. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it passes. Nicole, thank you for your work, this sounds really, really exciting. Thank you.
You're most welcome, and I really appreciate the participation of several council members in, in the process. It's really been a pleasure working with you.
And maybe, Mr. DeWalt, you could, since I know, I think, believe it was recorded last night, maybe you could just send that link out to council, if others want to take a look?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Great, thank you, Nicole.
You're welcome.
Well, let's see, I guess that's gonna take us to the GPS probe.
GPS probe, we have a lot of our assets mapped, but we have, still have some work to do, and we need the right equipment to do it. So we've got these options. The, in, in speaking with Tim, we, you know, the, the price, the quotes are set up in a way that we, we can order and procure the items below $10,000, but we're just disclosing it to you that we're following through with the GPS project and are gonna be moving forward with that, or wanna move forward with that, update our GIS maps and make improvements to the system. I envision a solution, it's, and I think you've heard from me before, that if a resident has an issue with either a sidewalk or a dead tree or a branch hanging in the public right of way that creates a nuisance or a danger or risk, they could open an app, see, click it, or see, take a picture and just submit it, and being able to report that. In order to build out those hats, those database of those things that people can report on, we need to have good GPS, GIS data, database and data sets to, for people to be able to tag and report issues on.
So the probe would be under the auspices of Public Works, or would reside in administration? Because a lot of, several of our departments are working with GIS layers, and I agree with you, I think that, that there's a lot more that we could do, that we need to do, that we should be doing with GIS labor, layers, making them available to the public. I know the tree canopy, we've got a GIS layer on that, and we certainly have a lot of things from Public Works on that as well, so.
In, in some ways, all the departments are touching GIS data. Our, now our Economic Development Office, we're looking at software solutions like the ArchGIS Business Analytics. We took a demo of that, and there's great data sets available through that, through that program. So our Economic Development Office is going to be using more GIS data. The powerhouse when it comes to GIS data collection and use are planning and community development because of the work that they do in Public Works, specifically Kevin and Public Works. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it did, yes, it did. Would someone like to make a motion on this?
Just a question, is this two separate units? Should it be all together, one motion for both of them?
I think one motion on the both of them, that gives us the discretion of final lies whether we take the unit in the, in that accuracy correction model, both, or work with the vendor to adjust what needs to be adjusted. Because you're looking at one model that's subscription-based, and there's an ongoing annual expense, we wanna roll that as a packet for the next two years, or go with the one model and pay for the accuracy corrections for the two years?
Okay, and that's still, you're still trying to determine?
Right.
Which one is best?
Right.
So.
But we would stay within the, the funding that council allocates for that. Tim, what was the number that you were proposing?
Is it the sum of these two? Oh, I missed the third one. What, I got 12,746, too? Yeah, okay. So I move that we authorize up to $12,746.20 to Duncan and Parnell for GIS units. Exact details to be determined by the, by staff and the best, the best value for the city.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Pope has seconded, any additional discussion? So please, Mr. Orleans.
Bill Orleans, resident again. That which Mr. George provided me, I was returning him to answer a question from Mr. Sam Ron, has a lot of information on it, but it doesn't say what this stuff is gonna do. And I'm just wondering if there should not be at least one more page that is describing what these numbers and that amount of money is going to do. I'll, of course, assume since it's being proposed and council's about to approve it, it must be a good thing, but it would be helpful to know what it is.
I, I. So much, and generally speaking, or always, there is, in the agenda, there are usually comments that sort of describe what something is in plain English. And because this quote is coming to us, was passed out tonight, we don't quite have that. But would you like to?
Yes, absolutely, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the project we presented a while back, the need or a gap in our, in our services or functions is to being able to collect GIS data on assets, things like stop signs, maintenance mains, you name it. If there's a physical asset in the city, that the city is responsible for somehow maintaining, reporting, we wanna have that on a GIS map that we can track and, and do things with the data. In order to get that level of accuracy for GIS mapping, we need these specialized equipment probes that can, you can mark a spot, digital mark, and it loads that core GPS coordinates to a data set that we can then do things with. We have several maps, oh, there you go.
Yeah, I think this is, this is not from this company, but this is that, that R580, so it's this sort of thing on a pole.
Yes, so both of these have these two-meter poles, so they're about six-feet poles, and that's what they are. So you walk around with these things, and you have a device that you mark that asset. So if you wanna take locations of, let's say, all the maintenance holes in the city, you stand over the maintenance hole in the center, you put the probe, and you mark it. you stand over the maintenance hole in the center, you put the probe, and you mark it. And as you're collecting that data set, it records that location, and then you put attributes. Is it a water main? Is it a sewer main? Whatever it is, right. And so, you can, you can tag it, and then that gets loaded up to a database and to a map.
Yeah, Pro Tem.
Well, and I think you might ask, well, so why can't you just use your phone? But I believe these are a lot more accurate, and I think that's when you're trying to pinpoint these things very precisely, your phone is not necessarily going to give you the accuracy enough. I think, I think iPhones can get maybe up to four, down to three or four meters, but three or four meters is, is, can be, I mean, if you've got a whole bunch of trees, for example, there can be a lot of trees within that three or four-meter accuracy, so this is more accurate.
Right, or if you have two maintenance holes, one could be gas, one could be water, the other one could be electric, you want to know which one's which. So, the, for the level of work we're doing, we need something precise. The R580 is sub-foot kit that gets down to the foot of accuracy.
Yeah, I think it depends on the software package that you're using. Atha, the Anacostia Trails Heritage Area, they have a GIS layer in a phone app that they've been using to actually map out the historic markers throughout the area. So, my hope, and we talked about this a few years back, is to actually, you know, get more of this information and get it out to the public a little bit more, so they can look and see, and as you stated, if they know that there's a problem with the water main leak, and it's going across the street, you know, being able to pinpoint that and tell Public Works exactly where the problem is. That's what I'm hoping will happen. So this equipment's a step in the right direction. Let's go ahead.
And we have some recent examples with water, with water main breaks that we had recently. We had the Sherwood Lane, there are, the water's coming from four different areas on the road. Trying to explain that to the, to the representatives in email and phone gets a little cumbersome. We had an issue that Ms. Pope reported to us on Spring Hill Drive, that we can't figure out where this leak is. We, there's water present, but there's no visible coming, water coming from anywhere. So, it's still wet, it's still wet, and.
Still there, there's water.
In WWSSC, I think you all know, I love WWSSC, they're a great partner. They have so much work to do with the H infrastructure, they can't get to everything, and not everything's a priority. So something like this just doesn't, is not top of the priority when you have big mains that are, that they need to repair. So for us, we can help accelerate the work, having that GPS data, and being able to pinpoint what the issue is. So, right on Spring Hill Drive, there's, we located the valve, and we've located other valves, that, water valves that are showing that they're leaking. So being able to pinpoint those valves and send them to the scene, to the team and say, hey, there's an issue there, check. When, I'll just find, just one more example. Mayor Pro Tem Weaver reported a light pole that was down. I happen to have the Pepco GIS map on my phone and computer, so I could locate that pole number, and I sent it to the scene team and said, that's the pole number. So I didn't have to give any more information, say, go look at that, it's damaged. So, that's an example of why these things are helpful to have.
So go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. And that's gonna bring us to the next item. Which, is that the police station, animal shelters? Mr. Samorone or Mr. George?
Motion? Was the motion moved for this discussion? Okay.
For the, for the animal shelter, not yet?
Yeah, okay.
I have a question.
Do you want me to start, or do you want to?
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
So the generals, as you know, we've been working on trying to fix the animal shelter issues. The, the facility needs significant improvements. The HVAC system is problematic, the subfloor is problematic, the roof is problematic. Tim, is there anything that's? So, maybe the kennels inside, those are, those are well-maintained. So obviously, there's some work needed. We look into replacing them with, with prefabricated shelters. The challenge we ran into is the permitting, the engineering of adding to the sites. It's in a, in a wet area, problematic. The vendor would take it on. We found a contractor that said, we'll do it, at a cost of $400,000. We, I think, I think that we, sorry, $400,000 is, is money that we currently don't have available in Opera. If it was available, I think we would, we would argue, we would try to make the case for it. But the money's not available, so the team has figured out a way to repair the subfloor, the roof, and the HVAC system, and get more years out of the, out of the existing facility. So this two-unit replacement, this replaces both units that provide heating and cooling to the current place. It comes at a hefty price tag. Part of the cost driver is the use of this crane to get the units out, the old units out and the new units in.
So this is a temporary solution.
Well, these, these are two units, they will run for 20 years.
Right.
But the animal shelter, the, I think, long-term, we need to find a solution. So, this doesn't resolve that long-term. I think a permanent fix is having an entirely new structure.
Right.
This buys us time and allows us to continue services uninterrupted.
Ms. Pope?
I mean, so we're gonna have to find a solution for this. I mean, $400,000 is probably not the solution at this time, but, you know, we did have $22 million in Opera funds, and we did not spend any on the shelter or the dog park. I think we really have to go ahead and, and, and find, now we're putting these two HVAC units on there, and, I mean, of course, they're needed, but I'm just worried, like, you put these new systems in there, and everything else around it has kind of fallen apart. So that's kind of my concern. So are we gonna, of course, I'm assuming fixing whatever is there to fix in the animal shelter up first, and then those units go in? Or how is that going to happen? And, and how are we planning for replacing the shelter? And are these two units, because they're now new, are they transferable to a new animal shelter if we, if we, if we, if we receive a new, in the next few years, a new building?
The, I'll answer the first part of your question, what else are we doing? Our expect, our hope is to do it all at the, around the same time, doing the subfloor and the roof repairs, and have the HVACs. I think the HVACs, because they're a system that's attached to the exterior of the building, they could be done at any point. But we'll try to get all the work done around the same time to minimize the, the disturbance to the animals in the space and the team that's working in the space.
I'm assuming the animals will be moved somewhere house, somewhere else when the work happens?
You know, fortunately, does it this week. We, our two dogs that we had have been picked up by a, an adoption agency, so from, from canine perspective, we are doing great. Like, our, our last two animals were picked up, and we were concerned that it might have been adoptable. We were gonna ask you to help us. So their, their two canines are out, so it will be great to start the work this week, but, you know, there are some things we, we just couldn't anticipate that. So we would, we would do that work to minimize the impact to animals. Obviously, there would not be in the space when we're doing the work. So we would have to find some accommodation. We do have an external kennel that has heating. Obviously, it's not a permanent kennel. It will be temporary for any canines that we have. But more importantly, I think we have the, the relationships with the county, and we would ask the county to help us as we, if we need that assistance. The second question, the second part of your question is, can they be moved to somewhere else? I think it depends. If we have another temporary prefab building such as this one, I think we can, we would look at the feasibility of transferring these, this HVAC to that, to a new, a new shelter. If we were to build an annexed concrete structure to the armory, let's say, just hypothetically, it's not in a concept plan, I don't think it would be, I, I don't know. I don't know that this would be the best solution.
Well, I'm thinking about if we're replacing what we have right now with a similar.
It all has to do, it all has to do with the square foot of the building.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
You have to have a certain size unit for a certain square feet.
For the same, basically, I mean, we're talking about it. So that's what I'm, that was my question. If we're doing something like that, if we're not building, you know, a concrete structure or attaching us to another building that's already there, then of course, you probably couldn't be doing that.
Right.
But if we're replacing it, that was, you know, can we move it then? That's my, that was my question. But we do have to, you know, look and find a permanent solution for this animal shelter.
Definitely do. Hey, I noticed that Chief Bowers is on the line, so maybe we could move the animals to his garage.
He doesn't currently have permission to speech, so they just leave it that way?
Well, he, it sounds like he volunteered. He's accepted the assignment, so, great.
Okay, let's see, did someone make a motion?
No, we haven't made a motion on this.
Ms. Pope, would you like to make a motion?
Uh, yeah, I make the motion that we approve the purchase and installation of the two HVAC units and at the animal shelter. Oh, in the amount of $23,745. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Pompey has seconded. Additional discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And finally, that's gonna bring us to this audiovisual, audio proposal. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We, we were having some challenges with the microphones. Now, the team gave, provided me a background on how we ended up with the Shure mics, and this is a major improvement from what we used to have, the bucket, the disc conference microphones. So we're looking at a two-pronged approach to solving our sound issues in the room. One is having permanently installed microphones, or microphones that don't move from the dais. So they would, the seven microphones would just stay up there. Because one of the challenges that's affecting the microphones is the constant moving of the microphones, the plugging in the wires. You can see this one is taped up, there's another one with a broken nozzle at the top, is damaged. So we're, we're looking at a setup where we'll have permanent, permanent microphones at the dais, and then more portable microphones here at the work session setup. The, the two proposals that we received, one, the one that's in front of you, is at $11,272. That's a permanent installation with gooseneck microphones that will be permanently attached. And then we can use these as our portables for the work sessions. That way, we can make sure that, that sound up there is tested and won't be, won't be affected with the move, and these will become more permanent. We received the second proposal, which upgrades the mics to the latest technology that's available by, by, by Shure. There's also a competitor, Televik microphone, and those two are identical technologies. To give you perspective, if you, I know many of you have been to the Four Cities Meeting at College Park. They have these wireless Televik microphones that allow for your smart card to be connected to it. You can vote on the, on the device to display, and if the mayor wants to mute everybody or give them time, just at a click of the moderator's microphone, they can control that. That's the latest, that's where, where the technology is right now. So it's not the future, it's where conference rooms, audio setup is.
Park was two years ago.
So that's, that's what's been presented to us as a solution. They're wireless, wireless, they, they have all of these components that you can even track voting by member and whatnot. The downside to it is that it costs $26,000. So the question before council is, do you have any, do you have, do you envision any setup with the wireless mics? I like the, the Shure wireless system because it comes with its own access point, so you can, those can become a portable system. So if you wanted to take the meeting to anywhere in the city, the microphones will make it easier. We, we bought the pile mics a couple, last year, and those served the purpose that we needed for the listening sessions, but the sound are not great, not as good as these Shure mics. And if we're going to use them repeatedly, the pile microphones wouldn't, wouldn't be the right solution for us. So something like the Shure mics that College Park has would be more of the technology we need. So, question before council, what's your appetite for the expenditure? We can spend up to, we can spend the $26,000 and just entirely upgrade to these wireless microphones, or we can try to put together a solution that helps provide a portable solution for council? And the portable solution, we're thinking. This, this solution here, this would be for the permanent installation of microphones at the dais, and we will get, we will use these as the portable ones and try to get as much life out of them.
I'm sorry, let me just make sure I understand. So, it would be this $11,000 plus an additional 26?
No.
Or, okay.
One or the other. Yeah, do you have the details on the 26, Tim?
I can pull that up if you want to.
Mm-hmm, that'd be great, and we can.
You know, the wireless solution, yeah, it's not something that's new. It's something that people have been using actively in municipal government, state government, and in the private sector for quite some time. So it really would be more flexible to have a wireless solution. These wires that are all strung together, we seem to just constantly have a lot of problems with that. On the one hand, on the other hand, our, our technology is changing, and as far as a permanent installation on the dais, I think, I think there's some other things that, that would be helpful. I mean, we're all using these laptops, which is kind of convenient, but, you know, in other settings, it would be nice to have permanently installed screen or something, and each station is a little bit larger. So I, I think a more comprehensive approach would be a good, better use of the funding. So if, if it's a choice between the two, I think I would take the incremental approach as opposed to. Yeah.
Yeah, I think I, I would as well.
So this, the proposal in front of us has the seven wired-in mounted ones, and then four wireless, but these are just less sophisticated wireless ones?
Correct.
So, those, would those be used, where, what, what do you envision those four being used for?
For the, the folks out here, so that would be.
Put one there.
One at the podium, and then we typically have two, one or two on my side, and then the presenters, for the work sessions.
Right.
So someone could come to the podium, and they can, and pick up a microphone, and then walk over to the screen and actually point at something that they were talking about?
And, the, but, but for work sessions, if they're hardwired into the dais, we'd still be using these? For work sessions with, with, with all of council sitting at these tables?
Sorry, ask that question again?
So, but, but, so, but we'd still have to use these for work sessions like this when we're all sitting at the, at the table here?
There are comments from council?
Uh, no, Mayor Pro Tem covered mine. I just wanted to make sure that that microphone was going to be addressed at the, at the podium.
So, so it will?
Yes, it will. We, we're, we, we've been trying to do away with that hard, that microphone.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a pretty old microphone, the one that's up there right now.
Try to get as much life out of things.
That's about 15 years old, I believe. Mr. Hartman, you had a question or a comment?
Michael Hartman, Two Court Garden Way. I have a question about the microphones. Some of the council members are very soft-spoken. Our city manager is a very soft-spoken. Other council members have very booming voices. What kind of modulation capabilities do these microphones have so that if someone is soft-spoken, they can be picked up or modulated? Or, and if someone is, like at the soundboard, you know, are they connected to a soundboard, for example, where someone could, could increase? for example, where someone could, could increase the, the volume from a, from a central location, whoever's running the audio visual?
I don't know. It's, it doesn't really, looking at this quote, it does something, say something about a.
It does, Mr. Mayor. There's a, two items on there that modulates the sound. So one is a, what's called a DSP, with a digital signal processor. It's a processing software that works in conjunction with the iPad, and the iPad is on there, that allows for individual controls of the microphones. So the microphones can be adjusted on an individual channel.
Is that like, you're using the iPhone as a soundboard? And someone who is, who's running the audio visual can then up the, the volume remotely, actually?
Correct, for the individual microphones.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Don't especially like the fact that it's tied to one technology, an Apple iPod, iPad. Kind of don't like that so much.
That it's tied to the iPad?
Yes. It's sort of proprietary.
The, the app, I think the app is, is agnostic, or the, the, the. The switch does the processor, and the software itself is processor are agnostic, or, or, you know, they're, they're, they're a proprietary system. But the app that runs off the iPad, I think that could be used on another, on another device. But I wouldn't be too concerned that it's stuck with the iPad because the core technology of it is, is proprietary, that being the Shure mics and the digital signal processing unit. So the iPad is just the digital interface with it. Does that make sense?
No, I'm not sure that that totally gets to Mr. Hartman's question, but, but it does to some extent. Okay, yeah, there's something called normalization that's in a software patch that would actually kind of moderate everybody's voice, so it's, it's pretty much the same. So it's not really clear. Mr. Orleans, or, Mr. Hartman?
I can ask, the Pepino is actually the vendor that did the design of the sound in the building. I'm sorry, in this, in this space. So we're working with the, with the vendor that designed our sound and video system here. So we can speak with them about what kind of, what kind of normalization of the sound can be done or adjustment, automatic adjustment of sound so that the, the volume of the languages can be, can be equal or similar.
Mr. Hartman?
I apologize. Also, what's the compatibility with hearing aids? Your sound system could be compatible with hearing aids. Could set up a loop system, for example, or something like that, that would help. People with hearing aids would be able to hear better, even though the sound is not as modulated.
Yes, we, we actually looked at that as a separate solution. Tyra, Tyra and I worked on, we purchased interpretation equipment. But that's language interpretation, so there, these interpretation devices. And as part of that project, we were looking at creating a sound output at the, at the mixer in the, in the studio room that could put out a radio over the air. And that if anybody that wanted a, a head unit, headphone, to listen to the conversation here, they could check out a unit, and we would have the mixer put the sound out through the, through a radio frequency. And so you could, you could be sitting in the, in the audience and have a head unit where you're getting the sound directly put into it.
For. That is, that's one solution. And then the other one would be a loop system where it would be compatible with hearing aids. It wouldn't be, have headsets. It would be a person's own hearing aid.
So we could transmit the sound directly to people's hearing aids?
Well, it's picked up.
Oh, it's picked up?
In that way.
Okay. We, we did not look at that, but that's something that. We, we, we looked at the, the, the interpretation devices because the description said it could be used in that way, so.
Right, right, okay. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Orleans?
I, I don't know what council is going to be voting on, whether it's this $11,000 proposal or the $26,000 proposal that was alluded to earlier. If it's the latter, then that should be distributed to the public so that we know more detail about that. But in any event, Mr. Solan was not here. I believe Mr. George was, certainly three members of council were. About four years ago, the city paid, and I don't remember what the price was, nor do I remember the vendor, but the city paid quite a lot of money to have the entire audio, video, visual technology in the room changed. New technology was purchased. It was supposed to be top shelf technology, I believe, at the time. And I don't know why, I, I, the experience, it's, it's lacking in recent months. But I don't know why it's not sufficient today. If it's because new technology has outpaced the technology purchased three or four years ago, then we ought to write into our contracts with vendors that if they're installing the latest technology and it's superseded by improvements during a certain normal course of time, they should pay the cost of improving and updating the technology, not the city paying again. I, I, I don't understand any of this, whatever. But if you're going to be voting on the 26K proposal, information should be distributed. One last thing, as was pointed out by the Mayor Protem. Greenbelt Council is not the only body that utilizes this room. Any new money spent on new technology should reflect the fact that other meetings occur in this room, and that technology should be compatible with the uses of those meetings as well.
Well, well, thank you, thank you. I, I'll just say that it's been a challenging evolution that's kind of brought us to this point. As Mr. Orleans correctly pointed out, I guess it was five years ago, 2000, right before the pandemic, we invested in, we were advised to invest in a technology update. And it was problematic. If you remember, if you were around during that time, we had constant problems with feedback, to the point where our meetings were completely inaudible. And it did not work in the hybrid setting at all. So we had to change, change a few things around. So it's, it's not been a smooth transition for us. And hopefully, this new technology, these new, this new microphone system or permanently installing these wireless devices will put us in, in a position where we can evolve more smoothly going forward. As to the utilization of the room, this is council chambers, and some of the modifications that we've been made here, I've advocated for making some similar modifications to the multipurpose room in the community center because that, that is a space where there are a lot of meetings, presentations, some of them very, very engaging and important for the community to hear. And to be able to, to record those or to livestream those out would, or to livestream a speaker into the room would be very, very powerful. So.
And, and Mr. Mayor, just, I understand and appreciate the feedback from Mr. Orleans. Certainly, we would, anything we want council to vote on, we want you to have it with as much notice, advance notice as possible. Now, we usually bring something to council that solves a problem for council. And we're, we're running down to the last minute on using this ARPA money, and we wanted to use it the best way that we can. So that's why we're rushing this to you. But certainly, we can, we don't have to make a decision on this today. We can, if we want to use the ARPA money, then we need it to today. But I think we have a solution that works, that will, we can, again, try to get as much life out of it as possible. I will be replacing that gooseneck that it's in front of Ms. Pope because she's got a, a broken microphone there, and I don't want her to feel slighted by having a broken, a broken.
Duct tape on there?
You know, we tried to cover it up with the, you know, color as close as possible to the microphone, but we'll make that repair. And I think we can, we can get more life out of these, and we can talk through it a little bit more. The, we, so we, we don't have to make a decision on this today, but we'll just acknowledge that there are issues with it, and we'll, we will solve it as things break. We can replace these as individual units until we make a more informed decision. The, I, I think that is a solution. I think that solves the challenge up there. But if we wanted to take a look at a more comprehensive approach to our sound system, we can, we can wait. We can wait and see whether the system that College Park is more conducive to. College Park has the same microphones on the dais as they do on the, on the tables. So that's just one solution that they adopted for, for everything. Now, they also have a.
Brand new building.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, that's been around two years now.
Well, two year, okay.
Compared to this one, it's brand new.
Yes, yes. I mean, it's a very. Very modern, I mean, it's a very modern building. It's state of the art. I mean, of course, they have the best of everything, you know.
Of course, the university helped a little bit with that.
Yeah, well, they, yes, of course. We don't have any university here. But anyways, we, we need to, yeah.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I don't know. Part, part of me thinks that it's, it's going backward to do another, or, or at least not moving forward to do another wired system. At the same time, there's a pretty big price difference between $11,000 and $26,000. Is there any overlap between the two proposals in the sense that if we, if we did the lower price thing now, for example, could, are these, are, you know, could we, could we sort of phase it in and do something now? And maybe we have some of these wireless mics, and then later on, we buy another, you know, another set of the wireless mics to trade things out. But the, these aren't the really fancy wireless mics, right? These, the, the four Shure wireless Beta 58 microphone systems?
No, in fact, those microphones, if, if you think being wired is a step, a step back, those microphones are a step back because it's just the stand and the microphone with a mute bond. The microphones that we have now are, are run over Ethernet. They have an audio jack. So if you wanted to connect your, your headsets to it, you can. You can select which mics to pick from, up to four, and it's got an integrated speaker. We just don't use some of those functions, right? There's.
Right. Yeah, I don't know why we would, I, I, that's, it is, you're right. It does have an integrated speaker. I don't know why you, I'm trying to think what circumstances that would be useful to, to use the integrated speaker, but, yeah.
Well, you'd have to have headphones on or something to keep from feedback. Let's try and draw this discussion to a close. We do have a motion on the floor.
Was there, what was the motion? I don't think we have a motion.
I don't think we have a motion. I have a question I wanted to ask for the, the wireless touchscreen mics that, that bid. Does that also include replacing the, the mic up here? And the one that you sent us in the, the $26,000?
Yes, we have item, the item, I, there's a, an item titled MXW2. Let me share that on the screen. And I, I want to make sure that Mr. Orleans is able to see what we're, what we're seeing. So the.
Got it.
There, there's four wireless, Shure wireless microphones, handheld with cartridge. Those are the $595. No, those are wireless mics, like the Shure mics that we have. The, the big price, the driver here are those, the cost difference of those wireless mics. The, the, the $11,000 proposal puts a per-unit cost at $341. On these conference units with a touchscreen and voting integration, those microphones cost $1,415.
Do, do ARPA fundings allow for the wireless mics, the larger?
The, the upper funding allocation that we're using for this purchase is loss revenue allocation, so that can go towards any expense.
I mean, is there enough money, is what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah, we will, we will carve it out. We will, we will carve it out. So we're down from, down to the 70, 70, $75,000 that we're working with. So we wouldn't bring it to you unless this was, this was possible. If for whatever reason, we, let's say, we, we didn't agree to this, or, or the expenses didn't line up, and we have money left over, there are a lot of deferred projects that we can buy equipment for. So for example, one of the things that, that Chief and I, and this is the reason why Chief is online, is because we, one of the budget items he's bringing to next year's budget is personal protective equipment for the officers that include the medical kit, the, the shields, the face shield. They're, they're bringing that to the budget, to the budget process for next year. And it's equipment that we have to pay for next year. So if we have any money left over here, we would buy that equipment and replace with what, what the officers need because that's an expense we have. I don't know if you want to promote Chief, Mayor Protem, and he can, he can speak more intelligently about what that protective, personal protective equipment is. Chief, you there?
He's rejoining, it takes a second.
Oh. So any money that we don't use, we are looking at what expenses we're anticipating in, in 2026 that are mandatory expenses, such as the personal protective equipment. And we would look to, to pay for those things because we're going to pay for them.
Well, as, as far as the mics go, I, I realize there's a really stark cost difference here, but I also do not think that these mics are very effective for many reasons. There have been many times in the dais where they just don't work. People are trying to talk. Like, I even think about our last council meeting that we had. Almost everybody on the dais had trouble at some point, just speaking into it and getting it to work. And only because I've seen those mics, like, and used those mics in College Park, I know that they're effective and that they work. They've been working there for a few years. I mean, my, my personal, I personally lean towards getting the wireless mics because I just feel like we'll get so much more utility out of them than we would if we were to sort of keep these and hardwire something into our dais. So that's, that's just my thinking on that. I just feel like we could use these so much better because this, I mean, these are just, there are wires everywhere. It's just, I don't know. I see people tripping on them and getting caught in them, and anyway.
Do you want to make a motion?
I don't know if we want to hear from Chief first.
Oh, I know.
Chief, sorry, the Chief first. I don't want to preempt him.
Chief Bowers, are you there?
I see Mr. Roberts has a question.
Mr. Roberts, please go ahead.
Well, I, I believe that the last time we went through this, we spent the, I think it was what Mr. Orleans was talking about. We spent about $125,000, and they had wireless microphones for a while, and they didn't work. So they got rid of them. So I'm wondering what would be different now and, and why we would have to, you know, spend this money now when we spent so much money before. That's my problem. And I think if these ones here were properly fastened and you didn't, you know, you had good wiring and stuff, they're fine to me. I'm certainly not voting to spend $25,000 or $26,000 on, you know, what you want there. That's, no, it's too much. And if we're going to do that, I think we need, I'm, I'm, the other thing I'm concerned about is, you know, who are we working with now? Did you say we're working with the same people that did the last $125,000? Well, I think they didn't do the job the first time. Why would we go back there? That's what I want to know. There's a guy that, you know, does work for the, the cafe over there. See him having any problems with their, with their mics and all that kind of stuff? And no reason that we should spend $125,000 and then it not work, and then get the same person to come out and supposedly fix it again. If anything, they ought to come out and fix it, period, for what we already paid them. That's my opinion. Thank you.
See, Councilmember Nissel?
I'm, I find myself a little bit agreeing with Mr., with Councilmember Roberts here. Because technology does change so quickly, it is really, really hard to want to do a wired solution. I also recognize that the largest problem is these moving around, and that problem isn't going to go away when they're used for other events. So it. So it, and then all of this, in all of it, we are taking $11,000 that could be used for other ARPA funds. So I am, I am finding this a very, very hard proposal to get behind personally because all I really want is for that mic to work. I I know that this is a deferred maintenance issue. And then I'm also trying to balance in my head something that a member of the public brought up to me that a lot of these quotes at this 12th hour are going to be very, very high. Now, do we know what inflation is going to look like in the new year? Will these costs continue to rise? Who knows? But that's also kind of clinking around in my head, just as a counterpoint.
Okay. Well, we've got two proposals in front of us. We've got some alternative ideas. I'd like to ask you, would someone like to make a motion?
And we also have Chief Bowers, I think.
Oh, is Chief Bowers with us?
Yeah, I think he rejoined and I think can maybe speak now.
Chief Bowers, how are you tonight?
Good evening, Mayor Council. I apologize, I was having an assortment of technology issues. My my iPad wouldn't let the microphone work and and I'm I'm struggling to get the other computer up and running. But thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I know the city manager mentioned the the personal protective equipment that we potentially need to buy next year, that if there's additional funds, we can make that purchase this year. It is a, it's the the CBN equipment, the basically gas mask, medical equipment, and any of the type of personal protective equipment officers would need to handle large scale events or hazardous material type events, which we, most of what we have now is expired and needs to be replaced. The little bit that we do have is is out of date. Most of it was purchased right after the 9/11. So it's about 20 plus years old, so it it's all in need of replacement.
What's, what what's the price tag that you're looking at?
I believe Mr. Solon has the the quotes that I sent him earlier today. That it's about $500, 580 per unit.
How many units?
We have a fifth, we're, council has budgeted us for 53 officers. We need 53 units. So it comes out to around $30,000.
So is that, that is that one that's like in their vehicles? The
Chief, are those in the vehicle?
Yes, all the equipment is maintained in their patrol vehicles when they're out every day.
So it's not something that could be just, you know, when they're on duty? And so you have fewer units for for the officers on duty? It would be just stay in their vehicle?
They're assigned to a unit. The the benefit of this one, of this equipment that the the chief has identified is that it's on a per unit basis. So we can buy it at unit increments. So we can buy as whatever we can afford on $180 and 47 cent increments.
Okay, and and what would the the shelf life of these, the the new, you called it PPE? What would, how long would would this equipment last until it expired? Chief, how long have you had this?
Most of the equipment will last about 10 to 15 years with the exception of the filters. And those are fairly low cost and they may be replaced every five years.
Councilmember Pope?
So my question would be, do we have to, does? So we we don't have to buy all at once, but does every officer need its own? Is it like specified to each person?
The the equipment is fitted for each officer. So each officer is issued a piece of equipment. It's test fitted and sealed to that officer. So we make sure that it works perfectly for that individual. And then the next person gets an issued item and it's fitted and tested as well. So each person has to have their own item.
All right, thank you.
Okay, council, so let's, let's make a decision. We don't really, and this is sort of a last minute proposal. We haven't really been provided with all of the information that we might need. For example, maybe there is some way to just address the wireless microphones on the the podium. I don't know at this time, but I I do know that we are here now, we can make a decision. And this is the last opportunity that we'll have to make use of this ARPA funding that is available, particularly from the lost revenue source, which means that, you know, it can be used for any number of projects. So is there a council member that would like to make a motion or Mr. Solon? Did you have some additional?
Yes, just to, just just to clarify, we don't, we don't have to buy the microphones. We're, we're, we're trying to bring solutions to solve challenges that we have with the funding that we have. We don't, we don't have to make that decision about the microphones. If we don't make the decision about the microphones, we would use whatever funding is available to buy things that we know we are having, we need to buy next year. So the money, I don't want you to think the money that somehow is not going to get used properly or is going to be wasted. We're going to use every penny of it and as best as we can.
Okay, and if there's no motion, I mean, we can just move forward.
Another
You have a motion?
No, I first I have a comment and then I can make the motion. So at this point, I think I would, I, me personally, my personal opinion is, you know, the personal protective gear for our officers is very important. Yeah, because they're out and they 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 may need that. And then that's, that's, that is a sense of urgency that I have, especially if our equipment is outdated and old, right? Because we would not want any of our officers to get hurt in any situation they may have to encounter out there. So I would, I would prefer maybe to wait on the microphone issue until we can agree with something and and discuss that further. But I would like to move that we that we go ahead and and approve the, how much? The amount for the
The
personal protect, protective equipment for our police officers.
Just as a point of information, Mr. Solon, did you not just say that if we did not vote on these microphones, the funding would be available from the lost revenue ARPA funding and you would go ahead and and purchase these?
Yes.
So this does not, that would not require a council action?
No, because it's not a contract and we would buy it on a per unit basis. So we're not obligating the the city to a, a, a contract that exceeds a 10,000. We will buy as many as we need, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know that that needs to be a motion, but I think I'm not comfortable with the microphone. I think, I I think we should fix that microphone, but I don't know. I I don't want to spend $26,000, but I also don't think that going, doing more wired mics is the solution either. So I think, I don't know.
Yeah. I think we're in a good place. We're in a good place to move forward. We we have, I, we got our 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 marching orders, not spend $26,000 on wireless mics that
At least not right now.
Not right now, no, I get it.
Not right now.
I get it, I get it. And we we will move to replace those two two microphones. I know I've said it previously and just, just things sort of not slip. Or, you know, there are other other burning issues that come up. But we will work to replace the the two wired mics in the room. And the, I would look to see what's the replacement options for these so that we're not making a significant investment on on replacing these entirely. But we have some contingency plans that what happens with the goosenecks breaking and the head units breaking. And we have a contingency plan for replacing those. Maybe, maybe there's some improvement. So we will look at those things. And we'll certainly replace the goosenecks that are are broken and damaged.
Thank you, I I appreciate that. So it's been a interesting discussion and clearly we we do have some audio in the needs that that need to be addressed, but, you know, $26,000 now, it's not the time. So i- if there is no other business before us, we can close the special meeting.
But there was no motion needed for the
There was no second?
Equipment?
To per unit basis.
Okay, gotcha, okay, thank you. All right, thanks.
Okay, so I'd like to move to, move to our executive session.
Not going to move to adjourn. Okay, so I, where's the, I don't know, do I have the actual language of the motion? I move that council go into closed session in accordance with section 3-305B, one of the general provisions article of the annotated code of the Public General Laws of Maryland, one to discuss the appointment, performance evaluation of appointees, employees or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. The purpose of this meeting is to discuss the city manager's evaluation. In addition to council, City Manager Jose Solon and Director of Human Resources, Duane Martinez, will be in the meeting. Note that council will not return to open session following this closed session.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, madam, if there's no discussion, Madam Clerk, will you call the rule, please?
Yes.
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 Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Robert?
No.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, and it's 9:50 right now, so this, the open session is closed.